Are there places you can give your glasses?
Probably yes. I'm sure Tom on this picture.
Are they readers?
I think they are.
I think they are.
Listen, we like the small place you all these readers, but we don't want you to be a reader.
I'm going to call the city council meeting of March 5th, 2013 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Here.
Adams. Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Tenet.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Could you join me in your sign and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business under the consent agenda. I have the approval of the February 19th, 2013 city council meeting minutes. Number two, 2013 overlay sidewalk projects, a resolution approving the transportation division's overlay sidewalk projects list for 2013. Number three, transportation bond trail improvements, a resolution approving a budget adjustment in the total amount of $4,296, recognizing unappropriated bond monies for the trail improvements. Number four, Ozarks Electric Corporation easement, a resolution authorizing the transfer of an easement interest to Ozarks Electric Corporation on certain city-owned property near Nolan Wastewater Treatment Facility to provide for a relocation of electrical utility service. Number five, 13-16, Serlock Industries, resolution awarding bid number 13-16 and authorizing the purchase of pre-cast Fox Culvert sections from Serlock Industries and Fedman in the total amount of $71,404.71 for the construction of a trail tunnel for Zalaghee Trail and approving a 5% project contingency. Number six, Mailer Property Donation, resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation of 1.21 acres of property from Lori and Alex Mailer near Cato Springs Road to be utilized for the future Cato Springs Trailhead. Number seven, Garland Avenue Widening and Improvement Project, resolution approving a settlement agreement with Glenn David Wilson trustee, Tony Hinkle trustee, and Linda Hinkle regarding condemnation litigation filed as part of the North Garland Avenue Widening and Improvement Project. I will accept the consent agenda is read.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion as second to accept the consent agenda is read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adams. Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Okay, I have been asked by council member Rhonda Adams to table item 10, the Weddington Corridor Neighborhood Master Plan. So she can be here, she's out of town right now, and she would like to be here to see the presentation and weigh in on the discussion. Allen, have you had?
Yes, I think Rhonda would like to be here for that, and I'd like to make a motion to table that item.
A second.
We have a motion as second to table item number 10, so those of you that is here to speak on that, we will, we're going to table this for two weeks, correct?
The next meeting will be March 19th.
Okay, March 19th meeting. All right, everybody good? All right, Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, number one, McClellan Consulting Engineers, a resolution approving a professional engineering design services agreement with McClellan Consulting Engineers in the amount of $279,045.55 for the rehabilitation of the historic Maple Street and Lafayette Street bridges and approving a budget adjustment recognizing federal grant revenue in the amount of $223,257. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As y'all remember, last time we presented this item and there were some concerns about some of the language, some of the items that were in the contract that maybe weren't clear about the intent of the city. So we have met with the member of the public who was here last time, who had the concerns. We went through those in detail, came up with a revised contract. That contract has been sent to the highway department and they have come back with one comment. I'm going to, I'm going to hand that out, but what you have in your packet is the revised contract that shows all the changes that we made as part of our discussion. Also, as part of the packet, there is a memo that provides you some additional information about the history of the bridges. And as a reminder, as the mayor said, this is a design contract with McClellan Consulting Engineers. Total amount of the fee is $279,045.55. So I'm going to hand out the one change that was requested by the highway department from what you have in front of you, and our recommendation is approval of the contract that you have in front of you with this additional change here on this, in this set of pages. So what you have before you is just, it's a, it's really a very minor change to the subconsultant agreement. The highway department did request that we essentially leave in the item that the concrete color should not match. So any concrete that will be replacing on the railings or anywhere else, the concrete will not match. That's on both the Maple Street and the Lafayette Street bridges, so the request is to leave that stipulation in the contract. So again, the recommendation is approval of the contracts as you have before you in your council packet, the revised contract with this additional revision that you see here in front of you.
What questions do we have, council? Chris? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. What public comment do we have on this issue?
Paula Maranone, I am the person of the public to which he was speaking. I want to thank everybody for listening to my concerns last time and for tabling it, and we had a great discussion, we met, we got it done in one hour, and everybody's on the same page, and it is, it was fixed very easily. And I want to point out several things in here, in the resolution, in the memo, I added some of the history on the bridges on there for your benefit because you may never see that. You know, you read about it in the paper, you may get one sentence here, one sentence there, but this is what was in the National Register file on these properties. So this is the official description of these properties. So if you want to keep this handy so that you can address it correctly in the future. I also wanted to point out, on matching the concrete color, I changed that, I pulled it out because that is something, and I didn't bring it back up after they said that they changed it back. What they don't know is, being down in Little Rock, as I said before, is that's going to be something that we're going to need to look at on these bridges as it goes forward, it's a unique situation. Usually with a historic property, you don't paint it, like if it's masonry, concrete, brick, something like that. That's like a big no-no, you don't paint it. But once it gets painted, like Carnell Hall, you can leave it if that is now part of the 50-year history of the bridge. The thing with these bridges that we're going to have to take a serious look at and have a plan for the future is how are we going to deal with the graffiti? So, you know, are we going to have a concrete that is deterrent, that has a finish on it? Is it going to go back to being painted or what? So that's why I pulled it out, and they didn't know about this, and so they put it back in, but that's going to need to be looked at, and we'll need to have a plan for that. I wanted to point out a couple of things. Remember when I was holding up the thing and I had all those little tabs that it refers to this in the contract and that in the contract, but I said it, there's nothing in the contract that gives a base for what they're referring to. That base was where we changed words from rehabilitation to restore. This is a restoration project, we're very, very fortunate that the highway department has the original plans on these bridges. So in fact, under the description of the project that I took a little liberty with on 6.2, it says, "It is the intention of the city of Fayetteville to restore both historic bridges to their original beauty and to thus set a high example for restoration from municipality in Arkansas and the United States." Okay? That's going to happen anyway, so we might as well put it here that that's the goal, and everybody get on board from the beginning because you will be so proud of this and you will win awards, and you will be setting a high example in the whole United States. The guy that does the historic bridges for the highway department, he will be taking this to conferences all over the country and bragging on Fayetteville, Arkansas. So that's a real exciting sentence that I put in there for you. The other thing, this paragraph really says it all. This is the meat and potatoes that everything refers back to. And yes, this is the design contract, but this contract goes to the other people who will participate in the project, and they will have to go by this. And that paragraph is, McClellan Consulting Engineers, Inc., it's on 6.2 also, under a description of the project. McClellan Consulting Engineers, Inc. and Horner and Schifrin, Inc. must comply with the National Park Service, Secretary of the Interior Standards for Restoration, and will be additionally under the direction, review, and approval of the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program, which is the AHPP, the State Historic Preservation Office, which is the SHIPO that you hear people talking about, and then National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, Section 106 Review, "To ensure that work performed on the two historic bridges is appropriate and will maintain the individual qualifying status of each property as it is listed on the National Register of Historic Places." That's like one sentence, but it's got a whole lot of meat and potatoes in there that this is what's going to happen, and this wasn't in there before. It wasn't like laid out for everybody to know, not only the people working on it, but the people who will interact with it. Also, an important thing is on design number 7.4, that they will obtain design exemptions where necessary to retain the original elements and design, and this will be under the SHIPO. If something will interfere with the qualifying status of a National Register property, you can get design exemptions for it. And so that just, it just pretty much lays everything out. Then, if this is in here, all those tabs that I had, I said I don't have any problem with any of them because now it refers back to something that is real, and it's basically in one paragraph. So I appreciate all of you very much, your patience and your willingness, and Mayor Jordan, I appreciate all your time, and Dawn, and Linsley, and everybody who's worked on this, bringing it forward, and it's going to be a great project and something that everybody's going to be real proud of.
And thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address us on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. And so.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank Ms. Maranone also because I think way too often citizens just kind of let something like this go by the wayside and don't put in the time and energy to get it perfect. And I certainly appreciate Paula's doing that. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a resolution.
I may go. I move that we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution.
And that is with the amended contract that was handed out tonight with the further amendment handed out by the city engineer.
Right, I assume so.
Yes.
Okay, everybody good?
Yes.
All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Thank you, council. All right, under new business, number one, Senate Bill 101, opposition, a resolution to express the city council's opposition to Senate Bill 101, the Video Services Act, and to request our senators and representatives and all Arkansas legislators to reject this unfair and unneeded bill. Linsley?
I went in pretty good detail, I think, last week on this, but for the public purposes, I do want to highlight a few things. But I want to begin by saying that this bill is on its way to the governor as of today. Just briefly, Senate Bill 101 would allow video service providers to unilaterally revoke existing franchise agreements with cities. If you know the public of Fayetteville, over the last 30 years, we have been able to do a lot nationally to hold on to things for the people, upon the people asking for particular things, particularly television service, access to government. They also like their rights of ways and their property protected, and the city's done an excellent job of doing that. This bill would also take control of rights of ways from the cities, from our ability to do with it or have a say with it, and turn that over to private corporations to control. Also, it limits the pay channels. I will say its final form was much better than the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth form. It was amended five different times. The telecommunication board, your board, voted to send this resolution to you in order to pass, to stress your opposition to 101. At the telecommunication board meeting, Kit Williams, the city attorney, myself, communication director, Fritz Geisler, our television center manager, Susan Norton, who does communication for the school district, speaking on behalf of the school district, spoke at the telecommunication board, and essentially asking you to pass this particular resolution. The bill had, of course, as you knew, by the time we heard, the week before we brought this to you, that there would be no additional amendments on that, that's why we brought it to you, then to say, "We need your power behind this because I think the Fayetteville City Council has that strength in this state, what you say matters in Arkansas." And when this passed the Committee of Insurance and Commerce last Friday, I will say it was not a bill that got sent to city, city and local. It got to sent to the corporate committee, it got sent to insurance and commerce with this bill. It passed insurance and commerce pretty quickly, and then it went out to the floor. We thought it was going to come up on the floor yesterday, but for some reason it got held. It did come up today. I will say, the city attorney of Little Rock mentioned you in the insurance and commerce committee on Friday as part of his speech in opposition to it. He mentioned that the Fayetteville City Council is taking of this issue and that this week, as of today, would be passing, he mentioned passing, a resolution in opposition to this. It is my opinion that because this is so important to the people of Fayetteville, I think it's important regardless of its passage today that our city record its position on this because we will see multiple problems down the road on this. As well as, if anybody comes back and says, "Well, the city attorney of Little Rock said that your city council was going to be taking of this issue," I think it is better for you that you go ahead and make that stand in opposition as opposed to say that you dropped it. So I ask that you have your support to oppose this on the record.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to add a section three requesting the governor veto the bill?
I would probably say not. It passed very, very strongly. The governor's veto can be overridden by a simple majority. I think he's trying to wait, and only veto bills that are much more able to be maybe withheld, maybe his veto could be upheld in some cases. We have another bill that's not passed everything yet that's even more dangerous for us. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it on this particular bill. I think this bill passed too strongly, I don't think he's going to veto it.
Okay, thank you.
I was about to say yes, but I think that's a wise opinion based on what we've seen of the session.
Yes, I know he's vetoed several bills and has been overridden on each of them.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I want to take the time to put this on the record to call it what it is, which is a taking of the citizens' rights to manage their own space. You know, we hold that space, our streets and our rights of ways. We manage it and trust with the citizens who chose us to do that for them. And, you know, we just need to call it what it is. It's a taking away of the citizens' rights themselves and turn it over to a corporation.
Any other comments from council on this certain, we certainly have come out against, and a lot of the amendments that was put on it because of the, the work that was done through this city. But at the end of the day, it is what it is. Yes, Allen?
Well, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the administration keeping an eye on this. I, I know, I for one contacted all of my representatives and people in Little Rock because this is a bad bill. This is bad for the people of Arkansas, it's bad for people who live in municipalities. And I talked to the legislative liaison for the municipal league, and he said this bill was a, could have been a disaster in its original form and still can be disastrous now. So I appreciate y'all staying on top of it, and I'm just very disappointed in Arkansas legislature for passing this.
Any other comments from council on it? Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
One more question.
Certainly.
Since with the passage of this, we can probably reasonably expect that our franchise revenue will be disappearing? Is that not the case?
It won't, it won't happen, at least for the first couple of years, I don't think. It's decided, how much revenue is decided by the franchise holder, which currently is still us. The two franchise companies will have to petition and fill out an application, basically, to the state, Secretary of State. The bill starts with the same franchise fee we're getting right now. I would think in the future, if you look at what's happened in other states, that the franchise fee goes away because it doesn't take anything out of the state coffers, it just takes money out of the city treasury. And so in the future, I would think it is very likely the franchise fee will be reduced, if not eliminated. But that should not happen for a couple of years.
And that will require additional legislation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, never mind.
I did ask for public comment, thank y'all. Any other comments from council on this?
We pass the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Thank you, council, very much. Okay, number two, Senate Bill 367, opposition, a resolution to oppose Senate Bill 367 as endangering all of Fayetteville's development regulations. Kit, you want to?
Mr. Mayor, I thought Senate Bill 101 was a real shot across all bowels until they presented this particular bill, which is entitled the Private Property Protection Act. And this would endanger all of our developmental regulations because if they are applied to a piece of property being developed, then if the landowner says, "Well, that's reducing my value by 10%," then the taxpayers have to pay. As you all are well aware, we have an extensive development regulation scheme. We require developers, if they're building a new subdivision, to build streets and sidewalks so that people that buy houses on their, in their subdivision can get out and meet the rest of our infrastructure. We require that they dedicate utility easements and drainage easements and detention ponds usually in order to try to stop flooding and to be able to have utilities for their citizens. Well, this takes up land, and if it takes up more than 10% land, then I would think the landowner could say, "Hey, you devalued my property, so, you know, taxpayers, you're going to have to pay me for the streets that were dedicated, for these detention ponds, for the sidewalks, for the utility easements." Now, when I brought this up to the sponsor of this bill, he said, "Oh, no, that's not how it'll work." And I wish he was correct, but he, his bill does not say that. His bill says that once it's applied to the land, that it takes effect. So pre-existing development regulations we have would still be affected by this bill the way I read it. I would hope that he was right, but I'm afraid he's not. What surprised me is, and I didn't even realize this until, I think it was yesterday, I was looking up some old minutes on another issue and came across some minutes in 1995 when I was on a city council, and lo and behold, this same bill was before the House at that point in time. And it was also entitled the Private Property Protection Act, was also opposed by the municipal league and everybody else. And that time, it was in the city council. In fact, we had a resolution that was passed unanimously asking our senators' representatives to vote against it because it would be so bad for Fayetteville. Well, it was, never made it out of committee, and so it did not become the law. Unfortunately, Senate Bill 367 has now made it out of committee and is, I had hoped it would not, but this is now a real danger and can potentially pass the legislature despite the fact that it would adversely affect not only every city and county and any of their regulations, but even state agencies like the Department of Ecology, and when they try to protect Beaver Lake, when they want to try to keep Beaver Lake from becoming polluted by having any kind of restrictions on riparian landowners so that they don't mess up the water, well, if the riparian landowner says, "Oh, well, you're taking my property then, if I can't run my cattle into the creek," well then, so it even, even is dangerous when it comes to state agencies. So I think this is a, a very dangerous and serious bill, and it actually has a chance to pass. And I hope very much it does not, but that's one reason that the mayor authorized me to bring this to you for your consideration, and I'm certainly willing to answer any questions I can about that.
You know, council, what we have at risk here is like your streamside protection, city fire code, landscape regulations, our sidewalk program we've been talking about, street programs, stream, stream protection. I, that's just, that's all I can just think of.
Tree preservation.
Tree preservation, hillside protection, everything. So I think it's a very dangerous bill, and I think.
I do want to add one other thing is, is it's not needed either. Just like 101 was not needed because we had a franchise agreement, everything was working okay. We have specific provisions within our Unified Development Code that if a developer thinks that we are taking more than what's constitutionally allowed, demanding more of them, their property or any of the money they're paying, they can appeal to the planning commission without a lawyer and get it reduced. And in the last dozen years, we have never had a land developer challenge the city in court saying, "You're taking too much property." It hasn't happened, and it hasn't happened because we are careful not to do that. So this would unfortunately spur tremendous amounts of litigation and be very costly for our taxpayers if we dared to try to enforce our development regulations. So it is just a very dangerous bill.
What questions do we have from the council on this? Okay, what public comment do we have? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes?
I had a couple of comments as well, specifically as your city planner. I would agree, this does not bode well for Fayetteville. I think Matthew said about the last bill, something that I would agree here. It, this bill particularly diminishes the ability for locally elected officials to effectively for locally elected officials to effectively govern citizens. It's a quality of life issue. As you know, all of our development regulations are for health, safety and welfare of our citizens, and it's something that we're concerned about in particular with this particular legislation. As you all know, with the input of citizens here, just about every meeting, you weigh the pros and cons of different items on a development or a rezoning application. Not everyone goes away happy on every issue, but you listen and they provide input and you make the decision, the best decision that is fair and balanced, trying to achieve what the vision this city is. And I feel like that this bill really strips away the ability for the city, both on the staff and administrative side, but also on the council, it's legislative side, the ability to do that. So as a city planner and as a citizen, honestly, who hopes to continue growing up in this community with my children and have a high quality of life, that very much concerns me.
Mayor might add a comment. As the chief of staff of the city, I guess the point I would make is that this goes way beyond just your voting of opposition for a bill. I think it is such significant impact on Fayetteville and its development code and its protection of residents that we hope that if this passes, you'll use every directory you have with your ward, that you'll contact your representatives yourself. This bill is sponsored by Northwest Arkansas Legislature and is actually has a co-sponsor with a Fayetteville representative, Representative Collins, who was in this very chamber not too many months ago on a Brookberry development wanting protection of trees and access for a neighborhood that was in front of you that could very much be argued could be a 10 percent impact that the city would have to pay. So I think it's very important that some of these people be held accountable for their votes. Elections have consequences. And I think it's important that citizens get involved when they see that those things impact the very things that we value in our city. And one of the things that we hear is that they're not hearing opposition. So I think it's our job to make sure that we let our citizens know what the impact of this legislation would be and ask them to contact their representatives.
Okay, yes, Mayor.
Well, echoing what was just said, Representative Charlie Collins is just wrong. And the effect of this bill will be to strip away every good thing Fayetteville has done for land use in the last decade, 10 to 15 years. He's just wrong about it. And the proof is in the pudding. Aside from, or in addition to what our attorney mentioned, I am in the appeals process. Just look at historical property values as these pieces of legislation have been passed. They go up. They don't negatively impact property values. And it's just so wrong on its face. I can't believe it's seeing the light of day from a Fayetteville representative who says he loves to live here. It's just, it's preposterous.
Anybody else? Okay. And so?
Move to pass the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh. Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Thank you, council, very much. Now, we'll be going down to meet with the executive board at municipal league tomorrow in Little Rock, so we'll say something about this down there again. I will take this resolution with me. So thank you all very much. Okay, number three. Avfuel Corporation contract. An ordinance waiving requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving contract with Avfuel Corporation to provide interim aviation fuel and refueller trucks to the Fayetteville Executive Airport for a period not to exceed 90 days pending a permanent competitively solicited and awarded contract. Kit?
Whereas the city has determined to terminate its agreement with Millionaire, the current fixed base operator for the Fayetteville Executive Airport, and whereas continued fixed base operation services on or after March 15, 2013, including the provision of aviation fuel and appropriate equipment to dispense and store such fuel are required for the functioning of the airport pending a selection of a permanent aviation fuel equipment contractor pursuant to competitive solicitation and award process. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract with Avfuel Corporation, which is marked as GIBDA attached here to and made part hereof, for the provision of aviation fuel and refueller trucks to the Fayetteville Executive Airport for a period not to exceed 90 days pending a permanent competitively solicited and awarded contract.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I briefed you on last Tuesday night, this is an interim agreement that we may or may not enact should we be able to get the solicitation out and competitively bid the contract, which I don't anticipate happening because purchasing's been very, very busy. So in the interim, we'll award this contract and be able to cancel it at any time once we award a permanent contract for the sale of fuel. We will humbly request all three readings tonight because we need to be ready by the 16th of March.
What questions do we have for Ray? Okay, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to pass the ordinance.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Go to the second reading.
Second, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh. Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty. Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with Avfuel Corporation to provide interim aviation fuel and refueller trucks to the Fayetteville Executive Airport for a period not to exceed 90 days pending a permanently, a permanent competitively solicited and awarded contract.
Move to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh. Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty. Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with Avfuel Corporation to provide interim aviation fuel and refueller trucks to the Fayetteville Executive Airport for a period not to exceed 90 days pending a permanent competitively solicited and awarded contract.
Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh. Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty. Tenet.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ray. All right, number four. Come and Go Land Sale Proceeds. Resolution stating the intent of the city council and the City of Fayetteville to use the majority of the proceeds from the land sale to Come and Go LC for improvements to the remaining city-owned property adjacent neighborhoods. Sarah and Matt?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Well, we've seen a couple of communications, a memo from the city attorney and an email from the Chamber of Commerce, our economic development lead, stating that there may be better uses for the money. And I've heard the same from some aldermen. So let me start by saying we will certainly, I think, entertain any amendment that preserves the intent of the ordinance. I think it's important that we make a commitment, a statement about the recycling of the materials. It'd be the first time the city council has ever publicly said that construction or demolition waste from a project should be recycled. And I think that's an important statement to make. And the administration, their plans to do a reverse auction for the site, I think, are very much in line with that goal. But more than that, I think it's very important that we set the wheels in motion to create a plan for the property. When the property was purchased, there was no plan for it. Many ideas, some compelling ideas and some not so compelling ideas, but no specific plan. I believe the property was purchased in 2006 or 2007, or was it even earlier than that?
Earlier than that.
2004, I think.
So eight years with no plan for the property. And we still own seven acres. And I think we've stated our intention that at least two of those seven acres should be sold for a commercial purpose. But the remaining five acres, there's still no plan. And we could set the wheels in motion to come up with one tonight. The adjacent neighborhoods have been significantly negatively impacted by the state of that building since at least 2004. And this is our opportunity to, again, set the wheels in motion to do something about it. So I'd ask that we consider things from that perspective. Now, I did want to address at least one thing in one of the memos we had. The city attorney said that he had not received any information from Come and Go. And I apologize, I don't have a printout of this. I just received this in an email to me this afternoon at about 4 o'clock. There's a letter from Come and Go stating their agreeance. And if it's okay, I'll go ahead and read it. It's short. "To the members of the city council, the City of Fayetteville, in late February, Alderman Matthew Petty spoke with us about possible uses of the city's Mexican original property after the factory building was demolished. He asked if Come and Go would object to the creative reuse of certain elements of the factory, such as the grain towers on the south side of the plant, but excluding structures located on the property needed for the new Come and Go. Alderman Petty provided us with photos of elements of the factory which may be suitable for repurposing for aesthetic amenities and showed us images of a similar project in Seattle." That was, those were the slides that Councilwoman Marsh put together. "This letter is to affirm that Come and Go does not object to the repurposing of portions of the Mexican original building so long as the retained features exist on the portions of the property which remain under city ownership and demolition proceeds in a timely manner as outlined in our land purchase agreement." Is signed by Nikki DePhillips, the Senior Vice President of Store Development. I think that the main, perhaps concern of the rest of the members, at least my perception, is what the money could be used for, what other uses it may have. I think that's a very important deliberation for us to go through. You know, it is my opinion that we should do something for the neighborhood. The connectivity improvements that have been outlined in the contract, the streets are a good start. But the fact is, there's no sidewalk or bike lane or trail connecting those neighborhoods to the rest of the community. And there needs to be. And this is an opportunity to reserve some funds to help those neighborhoods. And our intention is to designate a simple majority of the net proceeds from the sale. And again, I think if the majority of the council thinks that isn't a good idea, our interest is in preserving the intent of the rest of the ordinance. And we'd certainly be amenable to amendment if that's the majority of the council's wishes.
Sarah?
I know many people are wondering, you know, what all the fuss is about this old abandoned factory site. But I would advocate that this is actually a really important site. It's a high-traffic area located on a node on within, around the box that surrounds our city. It's the gateway to our Commerce District that employs over 4,000 people. It's a good potential connection point for the trail that will eventually run along the west fork of the White River. And it's adjacent to Happy Hollow Elementary School. This neighborhood has the potential to serve as a neighborhood center for an area that is a food desert, that has many residents that are economically challenged. We have hut housing, we have the Seven Hills Homeless Shelter in this area. And they're isolated by a lack of transit and sidewalk and trail connectivities. Really, what this resolution is asking us to do is we're requesting for city staff to develop a master plan for the site that is consistent with our 2030 city plan to maximize the economic and social value of the site, both for the city as a whole and the adjacent neighborhoods and Commerce District. First, we would like them to delineate the prime parcels for sale for future development and to zone them for appropriate infill. Second, we would like them to allocate a portion of the site for a community amenity with an emphasis on connectivity and urban agriculture. Some of the amenities that we'd love the site, or for the staff to consider would be community gardens or food forests, trail connections, a recycling drop-off center, a low-impact development demonstration area, an economic incubation zone that could host mobile vendors, play areas, an area for a small farmer's market, tennis courts, or wildlife conservation area. Really, we just want the staff to look at this and to make an informed judgment about what should go on that site. What is the highest and best use for the community? And then third, we are just asking to look for opportunities to recycle, salvage and repurpose the old factory building or pieces of it. In the agenda session, I presented some ideas for repurposing, the grain towers that could serve as a focal point for the site. And this kind of thoughtful repurposing is the kind of project that wins awards and looks great on our promotional literature. And this resolution additionally just supports the work that staff is already doing to sell and recycle the rest of the old factory building. But ultimately, the goal is to create maximum value out of this derelict factory site. And by making the public investment in this site and neighborhood, we hope to increase the attractiveness and sale price of the other lots on the site and to increase the level of service to neighborhood residents and make the adjacent Commercial District more attractive to potential employers.
Okay. What's the other? I know the city attorney sent a letter out, memo out today.
I did. I pointed out, we do have some requirements under our contract in your resolution where we did agree, the city council agreed to the demolition removal of the factory. And that's what our land sale agreement does too. It says that we would remove it and remove unsalvageable debris. And of course, the city staff now is looking at possibly selling the above-ground portions of this facility. It has enough metal in it to generate interest from companies that would like to salvage it. I think there's supposed to be a walkthrough. I don't see Dave.
Monday. David?
But I think there's supposed to be a walkthrough, maybe even next Monday, for people that are interested possibly in bidding to see whether or not they will pay us in order to be able to salvage this facility. The problem we have, both for that and for anything else that you would do that would slow down the demolition, is that we have a very tight demolition schedule. It was four months, which I thought was satisfactory because I remember when we demolished the Old Mountain Inn, I think in about 70 days. And that had buildings next to it, adjoining walls, I think was a much more difficult demolition project. And so I thought there would be no problem in 120 days. But if we, you know, it's now been a month since we approved the project, the agreement, and so that time's been running. And David has gotten a time scale that if we go through, even with the sale, it's probably going to probably mean we'll have to ask Come and Go to see if they're willing to push back the demolition date any. If they're not, then we have to comply with the contract period as is. Now, so that's one concern I have. The other concern is if we start taking out the most easily salvageable materials like those grain silos or whatever they are, which are all metal and probably worth something in the salvage market, and whether or not other companies want to bid when we have removed parts of it that are probably the easiest to salvage. Just for your knowledge, you know, I grew up in Fayetteville and I've seen many things on this site, shopping center. And finally, in 1987, Tyson built his factory here. Now, that building was abandoned and sold to the city in 2004, so the factory only operated 17 years. I never assumed or thought that it was historic, but it was there for a while. And in fact, it's sat there, of course, since 2004 too, for almost another 10 years. And I'm glad, finally, that it's going to be coming down, at least parts of it. But David, you had some timeline, I think, that you might want to share with the city council about trying to remove a building.
The feedback we've had from the GOV deal salvage process, we actually had one contractor who said they thought they could do it in 30 days. It just separates the weak from the strong on the contractors. Most of the feedback we've had, they requested 90 to 120 days for that. We put together a pretty aggressive timeline that would give the GOV deals bidder 98 days for removal of the process, simultaneous for removal for salvage of everything they could salvage. Simultaneously with that, we've got to draft contact with Garber Engineers to, for removal of the slab concrete and then grinding of that material into a reusable product that would be used by the Come and Go for the development on site. Then that contract, we would allow 30 days, which... Then that contract, we would allow thirty days, which, that's a total extension of seventy-eight days to the existing contract, and put the final completion date of twenty-two August. And we, this is a, a very fast base, would actually involve walking one item on at the agenda session, because it would not make in time for the standard council packet submission for the GOV deals deal. But we believe that this is a doable function, based on the input and the feedback we've had from the GOV deals process. If we were to not get the Come and Go time extension, we would try to do the GOV deals on a reduced timeline, but I had, do have concerns that that would fail, and then we would just fall back and have to demolish the building in its entirety in order to meet that timeline if Come and Go isn't willing to, to adjust their timeline.
I think Come and Go might be able, I've been contacting with them to see if they would adjust the timetable. One advantage of the GOV deal is that this will reduce their costs, because as you remember, they are required to spend twenty-five percent of the demolition cost up to a hundred thousand dollars. When we had this estimated about how to demolish, how much it would cost to demolish this whole facility, a hundred and forty thousand dollars of that was to take the building down. So if we can, instead of having to spend a hundred and forty thousand, maybe we get paid a little bit, maybe ten thousand, won't be much, but be something, hopefully, then that means that they save money, too. And so they might be willing to kick it back, because they're gonna be saving tens of thousands of dollars. That's what the hope is at this point in time, I don't know what, if we tried to remove the towers and put them somewhere else, you know, I don't know if we'd have to build foundations for them, or whatever else you'd have to do with them. But that could certainly slow it down and might reduce the value to a salvager, and make it impossible for us to go through with the GOV deals, I don't know, I, this is all, you know, we haven't done this much in Fayetteville. This is all, all new, and, but we do have a fairly short timeframe, and I don't know if Come and Go, at this point, they have not told me if they will grant us any extension, if they don't, then my direction to our staff is we've got to get it demolished, because that's what our contract says.
Yeah.
I want to be careful that we don't conflate the timeline issue with the other elements of this resolution. The, the request to develop a site plan, I, I think is not related to the timeline of the demolition, or the demolition itself at all. Certainly, the requirement to recycle the materials, and the request to evaluate, and that's all it is, is to merely evaluate features to see if they could be reused, I think could be incorporated as a natural part of things like the walk-throughs, which are going to take place, and the site evaluations that our bidders are going to do. And I expect that part of that evaluation, of the viability of the reuse of any of those elements, part of what we would be considered would be how it would affect the timeline, and how would it affect any of their bids. So, I guess my real question would be for Mr. Jurgens, is do you see this as, do you see the potential for this holding up the process as being significant?
Let me make sure I understand the question. Do I see the potential of this resolution as holding up the process, and do I see that as significant? As long as, what I believe is that by putting this out for bid on GOV deals whereby we receive money and this, and this building being paid for to be removed, the only way the contractor, or any contractor could do that is if he's gonna receive revenue from what is there. So I, I believe that that meets the spirit of this resolution in that the products, the stuff there would be, in fact, recycled or reused, or salvaged in some way that would bring value back. Where that would go, whether it would be cut up and taken to a scrap metal for recycling as scrap metal, I'd, that's possible, I don't know. Whether it would be actually removing a refrigerator unit, or a compressor unit, or whatever, and selling that as an item for reuse somewhere, again, I, all I could do is speculate.
What about the timeline, do you think this resolution is likely to impact the timeline?
I'm not sure, I, I honestly don't know that I'm qualified to answer the question. If we had to slow the timeline down to do an evaluation, yes, sir, I think it, I think it very much could. If we simply allow the process that we already have underway to set the timeline and consider that as meeting the spirit in the, of the, of the resolution, then it wouldn't slow it down. But if we require more from the contractors, or if we subtract items that are available for salvage from the contractors, those certainly could slow down the timeline.
Thank you.
From an administrative perspective, as far as, the number-one thing that I wanted to do in this whole process is get the building down, because it was unsafe, and was basically what I would consider blight. And like I've stated before on city calls, I think we've had a hundred and fifty-four since two thousand and six, I believe. So, it was a couple of calls a month, just to, we are concerned when we walk people through that building. That's why we always have police escorts down there when we even tour that building. That was the first issue. As far as the plan goes, as far as recycling materials, we're going to do that, that's going to occur. The connectivity, when we were looking at this to begin with, we could put a drive in there, but I told the staff to build it, the road according to city standards. I envisioned a sidewalk going across there. So, that was the connectivity part of it. The, the issue that I, that I do have is that about the money, and I have difficulty, because we're at a, a real disadvantage, economic disadvantage, and we're competing with everybody in the region. And they want shovel-ready land, ready to go. And my concern is, if, if this can be worked out. But my concern is that I wanted to put a lot of the proceeds back into economic development. Now, how much we do, right now, we were just focused on getting the bids out there, getting the building down, but we will certainly, you know, I'm willing to entertain, you know, you know, your counsel on this, because you are the landlords of the, of the land. But we certainly want to make that land reusable, and we want to get it back on tax rolls, I believe. And we need to develop our economic engine in this city as well. So I want everybody to keep that in mind, and, but as far as the other issues about recycling, and, and what you do with the material and stuff like that, I'm certainly open to that. So I just want you all to know administration's perspective on this. So. What other statements do we have?
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
I, I cannot support this, simply because I think it's premature. I like every single idea that has been put forward tonight, but I feel that it's premature for us to tie up this money, whether it's a hundred thousand dollars or fifteen dollars, we don't know what it's going to be. And I, like I say, I think the ideas are great, but I think that it's simply premature, I think, for us to begin thinking about what the land's gonna be used for, and to make some plans, and to talk with our staff about it, I think that's a fabulous idea. But to tie up the revenue that we're going to receiving, I think is premature.
Justice.
It's almost like Adella was reading from my notes, that was interesting. I agree with, with what Adella just said, I, I certainly appreciate the ideas. These sort of, of thoughtful ideas from Alderman Marsh and Petty are, I think, exactly what makes Fayetteville such a great place to live, because we have people thinking like that. But I do think tying up a certain percentage of, of this money without being able to predict the future is really difficult for me to do. That's the only problem when you say something like, let's set the wheels in motion, because you don't know what the road really looks like, and so your wheels may not fit. As far as the neighborhood goes, and, and, you know, we owe this neighborhood something because of what they've been through, I agree that, that the neighborhood has, has dealt with this site for a long time, but the good news is we're taking care of that problem, and the neighborhood is going to be a lot better. And there's probably a lot of things that we can do for this neighborhood later, as we, as we see what comes down the line. Sarah is, is absolutely right, there is a food problem there, there's not many places, and maybe that land goes to someone who comes forward and says, we want to put a, a wonderful natural foods place here someday. I mean, I don't know, we don't know what's gonna happen. I had a lot of people from the Stonebridge area that, that I'm friends with that called me and said, we're thrilled that something might possibly go there someday, so that we don't have to drive the dangerous road to two sixty-five to get up to cross over in township, and, because that's really the only retail that we have, and so, but the problem with, with tying up dollars, in my opinion, is, is, is just that, it's, it's too early to do so. The ideas are great, I'm one hundred percent behind doing something, and, and, and love that, but to, to say that we're going to tie up a certain percentage of the dollars before we even cash the check, I think is, I think is way too, way too soon to do, so I couldn't support that.
Well, I, I wanted to start off by just saying that I really appreciate the spirit and the vision that y'all put into this, because it's ideas like that that really make me love the city, and so I appreciate that. I think that tying up the money, like I've heard other aldermen say, is a, a bit premature, and I think that it's just not the right time to earmark those funds. I think that there are other things that the city has on its plate that are important. One of the pieces of the resolution stated that the adjacent neighborhoods have experienced the worst effects of the property. And I think that's true, but that also assumes that the property will, wouldn't still be there. And, and I don't know if that's the case. The area did receive a new intersection and nice streets, and the new fire station, which significantly reduced response times, and I think those are all important things, and go into the quality of life in that area. But I think I could support this ordinance, or this resolution, if there was an amendment to remove Section One. Because I do think that recycling the materials is important, and like I said, I appreciate the spirit, so I'd like to offer an amendment to your resolution, a friendly amendment to remove Section One.
I'll second that. Motion to second to remove Section One, which is the money end of the grant.
Yes.
Yes, you'll consider that one before you serve.
Yes, I understand, I understand. Let me get some public comment on this, okay, is everybody good with that? Okay, Mark, I'm sorry.
Public comment on the resolution, I suppose.
On the amendment, I think, that's where I'll start. Amendment first, and then the resolution. Okay, everybody good? Now, let me take some public comment on the amendment end of it, which is to, to move the money aspect of it, where it's.
Remove Section One.
Remove Section One. Now, we stay with Section One.
Not everybody out here knows exactly what Section One is, could it be read before you?
Would you read Section One?
Section One says that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville are hereby instituted to designate a majority of the proceeds from the recent sale to Come and Go L.C. for the future development of the property for community uses, and for connectivity improvements for the surrounding neighborhoods.
Okay, well, let me, let me use one second, nobody's got this business on the, online. But if you notice this property, one of the things suggested is about a community garden. So that, that's out of the question. It costs, whatever it costs to tear up all the concrete, move it out, buy some prairie land, and sweep up the dirt, and put it over there, back down to the normal level, that's what it would cost to put a, a garden out there. You see, there's no green space, except little strips on the property. And even those may be partially red dirt, like the part out on the front by the street. So, it's no good for our community garden site itself. If you use some of the money to buy some nearby prairie land, there's lots of it for sale. And every year when, during this lull in development, while they haven't been able to sell these beautiful parcels down there on, on Fifteenth Street, the wildflowers have come up, the native plants, that means you've got soil there that's perfect for agriculture, without a raised bed, without any fertilizer, without anything but its natural use. So that, that part, I would agree, should be taken out. The, I believe the mayor has suggested that the infrastructure connectivity will be taken care of
Yeah, we got that.
in the course.
Yeah, it's already in the site plan that was approved by the city council.
Yes, sir. So I think there's no reason not to remove that amendment myself, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Albert. Who else would like to? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank Alderman Long for his amendment, that was probably the biggest problem I had with your.
Would you introduce?
I'm sorry, my name is Candace Hoggitt, I'm in Ward Four. The biggest problem I had, obviously, with this amendment is, again, like the spirit of the idea, and everyone wants to revitalize their neighborhood, but I do have a problem with earmarking funds for one side, and, you know, the other side's kind of, especially since we don't know what the property's gonna be used for, who wants to use it, there's so many questions out there. So, as a citizen, I support the amendment on that one, so I appreciate you. It just seemed a little, I was writing the same words down, with those premature, simple majority, those, all those things, and you said them already, but as a citizen, I just wanted to, you know, I appreciate the amendment, and I could support it in that instance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Who else would like to address this? See, now to bring it back to the council, we have an amendment. Any other comments on the amend, amendment before we go?
Just so, just so we're clear, just so I'm clear, sorry. If we take Section One out, then we're basically requesting administration ensure seventy-five percent of the non-hazardous demolition, Section Four feasibility creating repurposing the building. Okay, and the connectivity and, and whatnot, so really, the basic thing is just the tying up the percentage of dollars is what would be taken out.
That, that, the Section One is the only section that actually is a, a command.
Right.
Everything else is asking the city council, I mean, the.
To consider a ten or something like that. Right, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I just don't want to type the money, at least, right now, I mean, in my perspective. Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, Sandra, would you please call the role on the amendment?
Shopmy.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Okay, now we're, we're on the resolution as amended.
That's correct.
Okay. What other comments do we have on the amended resolution? Anything? Oh, I'm sorry, David.
Mayor and council, the, the word insured in Section Five, I think, is beyond our ability to be that strong, that we can even try to ensure that seventy-five percent is recycled or otherwise diverted. I, I just think that that word may be too strong, that concerns me when I'm trying to put that word into a potential contract with someone. We will endeavor, perhaps, or, yeah, we'll get as much recycled and diverted from landfills as possible, but I think it's a little bit beyond our control when we're going out to a salvage contract to ensure any specific percentage. And I wouldn't want to imply that we think that these contracts could guarantee that, or could ensure that.
Maybe the word is strive, to meet that requirement, but the internal dialogue of the staff was that, whether we really had enough knowledge to know that we could do seventy-five percent of it without it being evaluated, and, and its reuses. You know, we're hoping that we can.
I can assume if we can, we will.
But what happens if we don't, or how do we measure that, I guess is the question that came up in the internal staff.
Matthew, you had a question.
Yeah, um, well, doesn't current law in Fayetteville require us to document the end source of all our recyclables, and to account for that?
Yes, we have a current resolution on our curbside recycling program to do so.
Right, so I guess I'm curious why this is any different? If the intention of the contracts we're seeking are to salvage the materials, why would we not require that accountability for construction and demolition? would we not require that accountability for construction and demolition waste recycling if we already require it for all of our other recycling?
I believe that resolution requires it for our curbside recycling program.
That's correct, I'm asking why would the contradiction make sense when we're talking about construction and demolition waste?
I don't know that there's a contradiction, Alderman Patty, I think the issue is what markets would we sell it to, have we identified those markets today? We have very clear markets on our curbside recycling commodities that we track. Again, we're not trying to be confrontational, I think it's an issue of, it's been all along, our goal was to try to reuse as much of this, the terminology we often heard was crushing the concrete to use for gravel for sub base for our roads and our trails, the scrap metal being sold and melted and reused, and so I think that's where the general idea came from purchasing to do what it is that we're doing. This is outside of my certainly field of expertise, so...
Want to make, just to finish, want to remind, I guess, I guess remind staff, this is merely a request, it's a goal, and I think setting goals that are high and that are uncomfortable is important sometimes, and if we don't meet it, then we'll know why, but it doesn't get anybody in any trouble if we don't.
Sarah.
I can speak to this as a construction professional. This is, Section 5 is based on LEED new construction credit from MRC 2.2, and how you quantify this when reporting this to the U.S. Green Building Council would be by weight or by volume. And so if you look at, on a weight or volume basis, even if we just were to crush up the masonry on the site for use as infill or whatever road base, that, there's more than enough masonry there to offset the non-recyclable portions of the building by, if you're measuring it by weight or by volume. So I don't anticipate we would have any difficulty meeting this 75% recycling goal.
Can I ask the two aldermen, council members, excuse me, what if we, if we leave it in, what if we can't meet that? And I came back and I said, "We've not been able to do that."
Then we would know much more than when we started, and that would be valuable for the next C and D project we have.
I mean, I will do that if I can, but if I can't, I want to be able to have the leeway to come back to you and say, "We've not been able to do this, here's why." Fair enough?
I think everybody trusts you and the staff to make a good faith effort.
Appreciate that.
And, yeah, I don't think there's any question about that, and what's important here is that we set a precedent that this is something we want to do, and we'll learn through the process about how to do it next time.
I'm good with that. So if you give me a little leeway, I will certainly strive toward the 75%, okay? Adele.
I guess my question is, though, for our city attorney, do we need to change that word? Do we need to soften that insure word?
I don't think so, as I said right before this discussion began on that, is that the only section that actually had a command was Section 1. All the other sections say request. Now, the city administration's going to take this seriously and try to follow your requests, no question about it, but if they cannot for some reason, if it's not feasible or some other thing happens...
Right.
Then they haven't violated the resolution, as long as they've made, you know, a good faith attempt, and I think that Alderman Marsh's comments about the quantity and the weight of this building, I think, make it, to me, I feel fairly comfortable that we're going to be able to meet it, and if we don't, then we will probably have the administration explain why we could not meet it. I bet it can be met.
I will try and even do more than that if I possibly can, but I just don't want to say that I'm going to absolutely do 75% and run into something where I can't. That's the last thing in the world, you know, I don't want, yes, Al.
Are we taking a public comment before we move on, or?
Yes, I'm going to take some public comment, I was just waiting, we're just kind of talking. All right, let's take some public comment on the amended resolution. What comment do we have?
Is this to take out that one word? Change the word right now?
What word are you talking about?
Is this part of the First Amendment that...
No, the First Amendment's passed.
Is passed.
We were just discussing the word, Alderman.
And this is about the word.
We asked you to make an amendment on that.
I would agree with Don's choice of word. It's worth a two-minute chance to vote, I believe, on changing the word from insure to strive, or strive to insure, or strive to get it done, so that we don't have to come and listen to why it didn't quite reach that. I think it will also.
Okay. All right, any other public comment on that? Okay, going to bring it back to the council. Okay, what do y'all want to do? Yes, Al.
I move to pass the resolution as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass the resolution as amended. Everybody good? All right, Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, that was a good piece of work, y'all. All right, number five, are we all, we're on number five, right? Okay. Planning Commission compensation, I believe so. Res, I lost it right there myself. Resolution to request the administration to resume paying monthly compensations of the Fayetteville Planning Commissioners. Councilmember Long, I believe this is yours.
It is, and I apologize, there was some confusion regarding the amount. The amount that they were paid in December 2009, when we ceased compensation, was $375 per month, so I would need to amend this resolution to that in order to make the resolution accurate.
And in fairness, that was my mistake, I remembered 350, put it down there instead of checking the record, so I apologize.
So you want to amend it to 375?
Yes.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. We're going to amend the compensation plan for the Planning Commission from 350 to 375, right? Okay. Any discussion on that in the council? Any public comment on the amendment? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
I did want to say that this is a statement of your intent to direct or ask us to come back with a budget adjustment, but there'll have to be an ordinance change for our code section, because in the code it talks about the Planning Commission will serve without payment, and that was the one that was enacted, I think, in 2009 or 10. So we'll come back with both of those if, in fact, you do pass this resolution.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on the amendment? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Okay, now, we look at the resolution as amended, and any comments on that? Al.
Well, I'd just like to say, I brought this forward because it looked like it was something that in 2009, when it was discussed, it seemed like it was something the council discussed would be short-term in hopes that sales tax revenue increased and that we had a surplus, and the Planning Commission really does put in a lot of work, two regular planning and commission meetings every month, and two regular agenda session meetings every month, and they also serve on ad hoc committees and the subdivision committee, so they can end up putting 12 to 16 hours of work in this per month easily. I think by compensating them, however small the compensation may be, I think it will help motivate and encourage professionals who may not be able to serve on our Planning Commission otherwise, to apply for these jobs. So that's why I brought this forward, I thought it was time to have the conversation.
Anybody else? Adele.
Yes, I want to, I'm glad that Alderman Long brought this forward, and should have happened sooner, I remember when it happened, when we, when the recession hit and the money was slammed, and we planned to do it but wished to be for a brief time, and I think we all are greatly indebted to the Planning Commission for the amount of time they spend, it's a very important position, so I strongly support this and want to thank Alderman Long for bringing it forward. Thank you, Attorney.
Matthew.
I'd like to thank you, too. I wanted to bring this forward when we considered the Alderman pay at the end of last year, but I was advised to wait, and if you hadn't, I would have brought it forward as soon as we were done with the pay plan for the employees, so thank you for doing it.
Anybody else? Yeah.
I'll add my thanks to you, Alderman Long, for bringing this forward, and just say, this is another example of, these are not really city employees, but they're extensions of city employees in my mind, and it's another example of the city coming together and tightening their belts a little bit when times were tough and doing the right thing, and as we're seeing with things going a little bit better, doing the right thing in compensation-wise, and that's the same theory of the situation here, so the Planning Commission people do a great job, and I believe this is definitely something we should do.
Do we have any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution for planning commission compensation. Any final thoughts on it? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Okay, number six, Vacation 13-4298, 1353 West showroom drive Fiat of Fayetteville. An ordinance approving Vacation 13-4298 submitted by Crafton, Toll &amp; Associates for property located at 1253 West showroom room drive to vacate a utility easement, a total of 0.08 acres. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted utility easement is not required for corporate purposes, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby vacates and abandons the following described utility easement as shown in Exhibit B attached. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval and shall not be in effect until the conditions are met. Number 1, relocation of or damage to any existing utilities will be at the owner's expense, and number 2, the engineer or recorder shall produce a record drawing that accurately reflects the original construction as well as any new improvements prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Staff, who has that?
Earlier this year, the Planning Commission approved a new development, expansion to the Fiat dealership, the former Hummer dealership at the Fayetteville Auto Park. As part of that expansion, there is an existing water and sewer easement that encompasses that property, this is simply a request to vacate that easement, there are no utilities there, this would simply vacate the area on which the expansion is planned, and the Planning Commission voted 8 to 0 to support this request.
Well, any questions we have in the council on this? Any public comment on this? Come on, Alderman.
My only comment is, why don't we have the big screen showing me some maps of these sites tonight? Is that something?
My answer would be, I don't know. What, what, what...
We usually do that at the request of the council members, if you want to make it a normal practice, I can try to make that happen if you'd like.
We can do it. Okay, thank you, Alderman. Any other public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to the second reading, please.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 13-4298 submitted by Crafton, Toll &amp; Associates for property located at 1253 West showroom drive to vacate a utility easement, a total of eight hundredths of an acre.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Okay. Any final comments in the council on this? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements for bids by applying Section 34.23F, purchases and contracts not in excess of $20,000 of the Fayetteville Code, and approving a contract with the Illinois River Watershed Partnership in the amount of $10,000 for watershed education and planning services. Kit? Whereas the Illinois River Watershed Partnership possesses unique expertise and resources, ideally suited to meet the City of Fayetteville's need for watershed education and planning services as part of the stormwater management program Phase 2, and whereas the Illinois River Watershed Partnership can perform this work as significant savings to the citizens of Fayetteville. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby waives the requirements for bids by applying Section 34.23F, purchases and contracts not in excess of $20,000 of the Fayetteville Code of ordinances, and approves a contract with the Illinois River Watershed Partnership in the amount of $10,000 for watershed education, planning services, and authorizes Mayor Jordan to execute this contract. A copy of the contract marked Exhibit A is attached here, too, made a part hereof.
Sarah.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Reed, Staff Stormwater Engineer. I'd just like to add that this weekend, the IRWP is hosting a riparian tree planting, it'll be on Flynn Creek along crossover, they'll be planting 700 trees, expecting about 200 volunteers, it'll be 10:00 noon, and that's on the IRWP website, and if you have any questions, we also have Dr. Delia Hock here, who's the Executive Director of the IRWP.
Certainly would encourage everybody to come out Saturday, it's a fun day. Okay, what questions we have from the council? What public comment do we have? Okay, it is a great partnership, I'll tell you, between the City of Fayetteville and the Illinois River Watershed folks, real good. Oh, yes, Alderman.
Thank you. I'm jumping up and having a good time tonight, because you're doing good things, and I appreciate it, and I particularly appreciate the effectiveness of Illinois River Watershed Partnership, and I just wish everybody would read their website, go to some of their events, learn how to protect their riparian zone and so forth, because it's still not happening, and it's just like everybody involved in city government, everybody involved in development, everybody who's got a yard needs to learn these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else? Okie doke, all right.
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
I move to suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements for bids by applying Section 34.23F, purchases and contracts not in excess of $20,000 of the Fayetteville Code, and approving a contract with the Illinois River Watershed Partnership in the amount of $10,000 for watershed education and planning services.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Shopmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirement for bids by applying Section 34.23F, purchases
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a memorandum of understanding with the MS four jurisdictions and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the NPDES Phase Two Stormwater Permit requirements. Kit?
Whereas the provisions of the attached memorandum of understanding meet the City of Fayetteville's need for stormwater education and outreach as part of its stormwater Phase Two permit requirements, and whereas the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service can efficiently and effectively provide this service at a significant savings to the citizens of Fayetteville. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a memorandum of understanding marked exhibit A and attached here, too, made a part hereof, between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, the MS four jurisdictions, and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the NPDES Phase Two Stormwater Permit requirements.
Senator?
I'll just add, we meet monthly with the extension agents, and they report all of their activities, and I think they do bring a really good value to our stormwater education.
And this is fulfilling our federal requirements that we must do, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, it is. We have to do it one way or another.
So, there you are. We can do it, or we can do it. Those are your choices tonight. So, what questions do we have in the council? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? So now I will bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a memorandum of understanding with the MS four jurisdictions and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the NPDES Phase Two Stormwater Permit requirements.
It's kind of hard to get out, isn't it?
It's hard.
I move that we go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a memorandum of understanding with the MS four jurisdictions and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the NPDES Phase Two Stormwater Permit requirements.
It's kind of hard to get out, isn't it?
It's hard.
I move that we go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a memorandum of understanding with the MS four jurisdictions and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the NPDES Phase Two Stormwater Permit requirements.
It's not as bad as a bond ordinance. Say that three times real fast, though. Anyway, okay, any final comments from the council? Okay, Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a memorandum of understanding with the MS four jurisdictions and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Regional Urban Stormwater Education Program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the NPDES Phase Two Stormwater Permit requirements. It's not as bad as a bond ordinance.
Say that three times real fast, though. Anyway, okay, any final comments from the council? Okay, Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Okay, number nine, amend chapter one sixty-six development. An ordinance amending subsection one sixty-six point zero four of chapter one sixty-six, development of the Unified Development Code to change the dedication ratios related to parkland dedications. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend subsection one sixty-six oh four L double I F of chapter one sixty-six development of the Unified Development Code so that after amendment, the subsection shall read as follows. Subsection F, dedication ratios, land shall be dedicated at a ratio of point oh two three acres for land for each single-family dwelling unit and point oh one four acres of land for each multifamily dwelling unit.
Connie. An update of the parkland dedication was presented and approved by city council in September of two thousand and twelve. Unfortunately, we, the ratio of the land was accidentally left out of the resolution. Therefore, we're asking to update, to revise the parkland dedication ratio for the single-family and multifamily units to reflect the two thousand and twelve, oh, the two thousand and ten census of the Northwest Regional Planning Commission data. So, any questions on that?
Any questions for Connie on this? Good? All right, do we have any public comment on this? So now I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance amending subsection one sixty-six oh four L double I F of chapter one sixty-six development of the Unified Development Code to change the dedication ratios related to parkland dedications.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance amending subsection one sixty-six oh four L double I F of chapter one sixty-six development of the Unified Development Code to change the dedication ratios related to parkland dedications.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance amending subsection one sixty-six oh four L double I F of chapter one sixty-six development of the Unified Development Code to change the dedication ratios related to parkland dedications.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
An ordinance amending subsection one sixty-six oh four L double I F of chapter one sixty-six development of the Unified Development Code to change the dedication ratios related to parkland dedications.
Final comments from the council? Saunders, would you please call the robe?
Shopmire.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Number ten is meant table number eleven, employee compensation adjustment for two thousand and thirteen. Resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of one million three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to facilitate a citywide employee compensation adjustments for two thousand and thirteen and approving police and fire pay plan grids. Paul?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request for an appropriation of one point three million dollars to implement the mayor's compensation plan. Just to review a little bit, as we approve the budget, as you approve the budget for two thousand and thirteen, the mayor indicated he would come back with a compensation plan dependent on two things. One, what the revenue outlook looked like going into the new year, two thousand and thirteen, and how we closed two thousand and twelve, whether or not it was a surplus or a deficit. As I happy to report, last time, we did have a surplus of about one point two million dollars. What does this mean? That takes us up to a reserve level in the general fund of about thirteen point six million dollars. We need roughly five point seven million dollars to keep with a sixty-day reserve as a security. Based on that, the mayor's bringing forward the compensation plan. Now, this compensation plan incorporates a couple of things. It incorporates salary survey, which we've done this year to ensure that the employees or someone are on par with the market for their particular skills and their jobs. So, this incorporates those two factors. Essentially, we've got two pay plans in effect here at the City of Fayetteville. One is step for uniform, police and fire, where they're actually paid on a grid amounts certain, and they go up the steps with certain amounts as they move forward with rate wage increases. And we've got the merit employees, who are the largest group, that's about five hundred and sixty-five active positions at this point in time, they move based on money distributed to them for merit. Okay? So, they will move a bit.
So, we're requesting a 4% amount to be distributed based on merit to those employees. Now, what would this mean to each individual group? We found for the survey that firemen were underpaid relative to the market. This would provide for, not for each and every fireman, but an average of 11.4% increase to get them to market. Looked at the police, police were about 3.8% market, and we're recommending the police do a market adjustment plus one step. The combination of the two would take them up about 7.4%. And again, the merit was up 4%. Now, in numbers, this means that the fire payroll would be going up about $750,000, police about $500,000, and the merit about $565,000. Since we're in the end of the first quarter of this year, the impact through this year on the general fund would be $1.4 million. We did have budgeted in salary contingency $400,000, so the impact of this for this year would be $1 million. That takes the free reserve, as we call it, down to $6.9 million. So, that's a pretty good cushion going forward. Now, we can't predict what the revenue is going to do based on what we've seen just in the month of January or today. However, things do look pretty good at this point in time. HMR taxes are moving forward at an increase. Our building levels for new construction is holding pretty steady. And our revenue for the month of December, which is a big month and usually a key indicator, was up 5%. So, it looks like going forward that it could be that my revenue estimates were on the conservative side. I can't guarantee that, but that's what it looked like. The other thing, again, once again, we ended with a surplus of unspent money in the expenditure budget. Now, we can't guarantee that every time. I can't tell you that's going to happen. But traditionally, you don't spend all of that. The biggest reason you don't is you have turnover. So, as it takes time to replace those employees, you have some turnover. But I can't set a budget and say, "This budget's predicated to be balanced based on, 'I'm not going to spend the money.'" I mean, that's oxymoron, actually. So, this is what we're proposing at this point in time. We've run several scenarios. We've looked at things on the, what's the worst alternative? What's the best alternative? We come out somewhere around that, at worst, if we give these increases this year, give the same increases next year, the general fund reserves would be down about $3.5 million. If revenues pick up, we give increases this year and next year, they increase at a rate of about 5%, we'd go down to the general fund about $1.3 to $1.4 million. I think this is something that's important, and certainly, it's been on the mayor's agenda. And I know, as council members, all of you have talked to me, and employee compensation has a very, very high priority to you. I think this is a point in time that we can get our employees up to market, move their salaries forward, and it's worth a risk. I think it's a calculated risk. Everything's a risk, but we must adjust as we see the trends go in. I think the mayor's demonstrated he's willing and able to adjust those expenditures if we have to. And I think this is the appropriate time to implement the mayor's recommendation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions do we have for Paul? Okay.
Mayor, if I could make a comment on the handout that the council received tonight. You were handed out the pay plan at the agenda session. After that agenda session, we identified one error related to the battalion chief position within the plan, related to the maximum. Mag, who is the consultant, used 2,080 hours rather than 2,916. And so, when that multiplication was corrected, it changed the five pages in your study. And those are the pages that we sent you electronically as well as printed off here tonight, so you didn't have to read the entire study to find those. The last part of this is also the pay metrics, because there was a discussion about, in the merit grid, that our lower-paid positions were further off of market than our higher-paid positions. And so, we chose to address that by using a three-tier pay implementation system. The last four pages of what your handout is, is a summary page of the merit grid, which jobs broke into each tier in terms of grades. The market also recognized grades 107 and 108 were not really differentiated within the marketplace. What that basically means is that the market doesn't care what we call a position. It values the position regardless of where we place it within the internal equity structure of our compensation plan. So, basically, positions that we have in grade 107 and positions we have in grade 108 are seen of equal value in the marketplace. So, there really would be lateral movements versus promotional movements in terms of market pay. So, in this newly proposed grid, we've combined those two grades into a single pay line grade. So, if someone moved from one job in 107 to a job in 108, it's lateral movement handled within changes within the grid. The last three pages you've got are the percentages that we adjusted each of those tiers. The lowest tier was adjusted by approximately, not approximately, by 10.70%. The tier two, which are grades 109 through 116, are adjusted by 5.07, and all grades above 116 are adjusted by 2.14. And when we say adjustment, it's adjusted from the market point. In order to maintain a grid structure, you don't take the raw data that you see in your report and adjust a grid by that, because you get overlap, a job of a lower grade being paid more than a job of a higher grade valued within your internal equity. So, in order to maintain relationships, our grids are established from the market point compared to market pay data. That's why there are three pay lines. And then, the minimum is established by using 20% below the market value and 27% above the market value is the maximum. In order to maintain that grid relationship, it's done from the market point. So, these adjustments were made by using those factors you see on each page to those grades in that tier, and then keeping the 20% down and 27% up, so we maintained our grid structure. And so, the actual grid that you would be approving tonight would be the police and fire grids that are already in the report with the new amended fire grid with the correction on the battalion chief to the handout. And then, these merit grids with the three-tier implementation.
Question?
Yeah. Real quick clarification, you may have already touched on this, but if this passes tonight, I have two questions. One, when is it going to affect? And two, and is it retroed, or when is it going to affect? And the second is, when can it be revisited? Again, is this something we could do yearly, something we could do whenever?
Okay, this would go affect, it would be on the employee's first paycheck in April.
April, that's right.
So, it would start, I think, the beginning of that pay period is, is it March 30th?
The pay period begins March 18th. March 18th, April the 2nd, I think.
So, it would be on that paycheck. I believe, and I hate to speak for the mayor, but I believe the mayor's plan is to continue as we have and revisit this yearly at the end of the first quarter, where we can see the operating results from the previous quarter. I think we need to do that until we are absolutely sure that revenue and expenses are in sync. So, that's what is anticipated.
Thank you, Paul.
The pay period, Alderman intended, would be March 18th through March 31st, paycheck April 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Paul? Yes, Matthew.
Do I have any questions? So much should I wait?
Public comment first?
I'll just say now. Well, first, let me say that I'm proud to support this. I think it's about time. When I ran for office in 2008, the employees hadn't even had a cost-of-living adjustment for two years. And we've barely been able to do any for them, anything for the last four. And I think the market study just proves that, because of the hard choices we've had to make, that they've fallen behind. On Tuesday, the presentation seemed to hinge on this idea of 5% revenue growth, and that threw up a red flag for me, which is why I asked some of the questions I did then, and why I asked to go through some of the scenarios that I thought were more likely and to evaluate some contingency plans. I'm very happy, and I'd really like to thank Paul for going, Mr. Becker, for going through all that, because it showed that we have the capacity to do this, and we probably have the capacity to do it again in 2014, which I think is very important, that we consider future years, because we ought to be able to do this annually. When the economy is going well, we ought to be able to take care of our people. If you look at the way our reserves have grown over the last few years, and you compare that to the raises we haven't given, you find that they are very much related. It is a fact, when you look at those numbers and you take that approach, that we have balanced our budgets on the backs of the employees. That's how we have balanced the budget. We've maintained all of our services, and we've asked our employees to make up the difference. So, this is the right time to do it, now that we're finally able to do it. The other thing that I, the other reason that I asked so many questions of our finance staff was because we have $8 million in the free reserves right now, and that's not counting the proceeds from the Come and Go Land Sale. So, we have roughly $8 million in the free reserves right now, and it's very easy to look at that $8 million and come up with a list of things that we've held off on doing, capital projects, needs assessments, et cetera, et cetera. I've got a spreadsheet like that in my files of a wish list that I've kept for four years now. And I wanted to try and ascertain what capacity we would have this year, next year, to fund some of those projects that I think could produce income for us as well. And again, I was very pleased to see that our capacity is such that we can take care of our employees and do some of those projects. You know, I think, I'm just so grateful, I guess, is what it boils down to, that we are in this position now. I was skeptical for a while that we'd ever make it back. And I know that the economy is still volatile. It's still, on its face, unsustainable. We have a lot of changes we have to make. We have economic acupuncture that we have to do, but this is the best start we can That's the essence of what I wanted to say, but I really want to thank the mayor for bringing this forward. They say you can't thank people enough, and this is really one of those times. We've all wanted this for four years, and this wouldn't happen without leadership from the top. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew, very much. What public comment do we have?
Well, I too am happy that it's possible to begin to raise employee salaries. And just thinking about another entity that, in our city, I'd love to see the newspaper raised, and some of the other media, but particularly, the newspaper editor was very sort of inappropriate in his comments about the city's considering raising pay recently. And I challenge him to do the same for those hard-working people, because I know what it's like working there. And they've never been paid well enough. I remember when, just a few years ago, I was an editor with decades of experience, masters and bachelors in English, years of teaching experience, editing pages at one of our local papers, and I was looking at the city pay scale. Somebody had gotten that at some point by pre-rev information or something. I made less than the dog catcher, the basic dog catcher, not the boss dog catcher.
My name is Jeremy Ashley. I'm president of the Fayetteville Firefighters Association. I just wanted to, real quick, publicly thank the mayor and his staff, Mr. Becker, the, Mr. Maher, the time and the commitment that you guys have put into this. I appreciate it. We have always enjoyed a good relationship and strong support from the mayor and the city staff, and I appreciate it. Also, the city council, and we appreciate that strong support from the city council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Who else?
I'm really new at this, but just for a moment, for my curiosity's sake, could I just see a show of how many people here are not paid by the city? I know you guys say things are growing, but I'm not so sure they're growing in the people who are paying the taxes.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Thornton, and I am not a city employee and do not have any relatives on the police department or fire department. And I do pay the HMR tax every month to the city of Fayetteville, and I am 100% behind this bill. I think that if anyone needs to be paid market share in the city of Fayetteville, it should definitely be our firefighters and our police officers, because they do a great job. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, this is a very exciting day for me. As those of you who've known me to be on the council, completing my sixth year, you know, I've wanted this every single year. And so, I am very happy that we can now see our way clear to do this. Thank you, Paul, and to the mayor for pushing this and bringing it along. You know, I think that we all know that our personnel is our strongest asset, and so, we need to take care of them, do what we need to do to help them take care of their families and stay here and continue, as they have, to take care of Fayetteville. Thank you so much.
Just.
I want to echo what Alderman Petty said as well, that the city is in the position that we are now because of the staff and what they have done over the years. I mean, it is true, we're not in a perfect situation in this city, but it is much improved. And I, when I travel around the country, I talk to a lot of people in municipalities, and I've had people ask me, "How is Fayetteville in a relatively good situation now after the horrible mess that has gone on the last few years in this country?" And it's really because we've run this city the right way. We've done the right things, and we've asked for sacrifices, and they have been done, and they have been made willingly. And this is the fix of that. This is the correction of that, so that we do recognize what we all went through. And one of the good things about being on this council is that we have an administration and a staff that, when they say they're going to do something, they actually do it. And this is something that has been talked about for a long time, and so, it's good to see this come to fruition. And I join Adele and Matthew that I'm pretty proud of this one, and I think it's definitely something we need to do.
Sarah?
As a new council member, you know, I've been participating in a lot of the tours and being introduced to a lot of people that work for our city, and I have been so impressed by the professionalism of the city staff and really amazed at the amount that they're able to accomplish on our very modest budget. And I personally know what it's like to be underpaid, and it's demoralizing. And it's hard to be motivated to do your best work when you feel undervalued. Underpaying our employees is bad for morale, and it leads to increased turnover, which costs us more in the long term when we lose people who have 20, 30 years of experience. I think that one of the most important investments we can make is in our city staff, and I want our city to be able to attract the best and brightest so that we continue to be a great place to live. So, I am a strong supporter of this budget adjustment.
Alan?
I just wanted to, again, say thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Mayor. I support this plan because I think it's the right thing to do. I think we do need to be competitive. We can't keep funding new city projects without taking care of our number-one asset first, and that's our people. Public servants and merit employees alike deserve what's, deserve a fair work environment, and that includes their wage. And I just appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, before you all, I know you'll say something, but from a staff's perspective, I want to remind you that in 2009, the city staff cut $1.8 million from the budget, much of that through headcount reduction, 23 frozen positions, 56 unfilled positions, to get the savings at a time when we needed to readjust our expenses for the operating revenue that we were taking place. We asked many employees to cut overtime. We asked employees to take on more responsibilities, and they did so. Last year, we came to you with a plan of funding our increase under the premise that we saved roughly the requests we were making that prior year, in the hopes that in the 2012 year, our revenue growth would get into our base, so that those didn't have to be covered with savings, but could be covered with revenue. But the first year of that funding request were through actions of your management team, your employees, your field staff, through cutting expenses. And so, it didn't cost one penny in the reserves in order to fund the increases that were given last year, and we saw that growth this year at just under 6% and have covered that in our base. And while we have been clear at this time that to move to this grid and to do this change is probably more than a one-year growth in our budget, I want to remind the citizens that, again, the staff saved $1.3 million in 2012 in unspent approved expenditures in our budget. That this request is a million, so while we are using, quote, "reserves," we deposited a surplus of $1.3 million into the reserves of unused expenditures that were approved last year, again, hoping that we get growth. And if we continue to do that performance, then we'll continue to hopefully add things in. While we can't count on that every year, we don't know where our turnover is, we don't know when we might have an unseen circumstance, I think it's the mindset of employees, understanding that, talk about pay for performance. I think performing in the savings that we've done and demonstrated through fiduciary responsibility and sharing that back and still putting money in reserves is a success story. And lastly, I want to thank each of you, because I know that no one ever likes to tell people, "No, you can't do an increase, or we're only going to give you a check, or we're going to freeze half your salaries while half of you got wage increases." That's all happened. We have people frozen on steps, hired in one year, next to someone, working with someone that they've been with for three years on the exact same step, that'll never be able to be corrected unless maybe, you know, the mayor or I win the lottery and we can make that up or something. But the point is, is that we've always had a commitment from you, and we thank you for that. And I want to thank all the employees, our police department and their overtime actions, everyone, our frontline staff, and that's the other reason it's important to not use grid averages and apply a smaller percentage when we have our lowest-paid workers falling further behind market. So, this is something to be proud about, because you've taken care of our furthest-off groups who are our lowest-paid. You're keeping us market-competitive, which is your own council-approved philosophy. I want to remind you that we don't develop these plans on our own. We develop them under your guidance, and your compensation philosophy talks about the market leaders in pay, so that you get the top talent. So, we thank you, and we thank the employees who helped make this happen, and Paul and his staff for their continued diligence. And lastly, I would just say, I know he's my friend, so he won't ever get the credit when I say this, but we have an incredible leader in our mayor, and his passion for employees and treating them well and having them well-paid. And we want to thank him publicly as well.
Thank you, Don. You know, when we, when I came into this office in 2009, the economy was tanking. We had a budget we couldn't meet. I'm telling you, three weeks into my first term as mayor, we had the ice storm, $6 million. That was all within the first three weeks. That was quite a time. I didn't really exactly know what to do, I'll be honest with you. But I thought, "Well, we'll figure it out." So, you know, I went to the employees' staff, and I said, "Here's what we're going to have to do for us all to get through this." And the first year, I remember from June 2009, I cut raises. They were gone, out. Those few that were here remember that. Then, the second year, we didn't give any raises at all. Third year rolled around, we gave a $500 bonus check. Last year, we gave about 4%. And you know, you keep saying, "Well, you know, I just don't know what the economy's going to do. I just don't know," you know? So, you're just, you know, there's that little nag, and then we, then y'all wanted to do the pay plan study, and it came back. And I knew that, when I saw that study, that we were going to fix it. I looked at folks that were in non-uniform, scrub our floors, pick up our trash, our recycling, make it 18, 16, 12% below market. I saw our firefighters, 15% below market. I said, "I don't know much. We've got to fix that." And, you know, I, I just thought, "We've got to do the right thing here. Is there some risk? You bet. There's always risk. Anytime you make a decision, there's some risk." But you know what? This staff, as my dad used to say, "A dude a tie to." They're all right. We'll make it together. I've been fortunate to have a wonderful staff, a wonderful chief of staff, finance director, fortunate to have a great council to work with. I have been truly blessed as a mayor to have that. And I will tell you now, I know that our firefighters are not exactly up to market, and we're going to be addressing that in the next budget session. So, I want everybody to, you know, it was, I know we're doing 11 and 1/4, but they're like about 15% down. We need to address that, and I will address that in the next round of budgets. And so, you know, I guess, at the end of the day, I told the chief of staff and all that stuff came in, I said, told Paul, I said, "Well, I'll have to go home. I'll have to think about it over the weekend I came back." That Monday, and I said, "I've made a decision. I'm going to go forward with the pay plan, because it's the right thing to do." I said, "We already knew that. I knew that when you got the pay plan in on Thursday." So, it was like Monday, and we already been working on it, Mayor. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is the time to do it. And if we don't do it now, when's it going to get done? And if we don't do it, who's going to do it? So, here we go. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, council, very much.
Move our pass resolution.
Move the motion. Pass the resolution. Son, would you please call the row?
Shotmyer?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Thank you, council, very much. Okay. What announcements do we have? Okay, what announcements do we have? Well, I guess we are in charge. Thank you all.